Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the month of October 2019. Commissioner Hart is running a little bit late. He's attending festivities related to Senior Night at Haverford High School with his daughter. And I'd ask our Township Manager and Secretary Dave Bourbon to please call for all.
Mr. Demilia.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Dr. Hart running late. Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
I'd ask our Finance Director and Assistant Township Manager Amy Cuthbertson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
God bless you.
I'd ask that we just bow our heads in remembrance of Jack Denny, a Haverford Middle School student who tragically passed away on September 30th. We have a number of proclamations to state. The first of which is Violet McKeever, celebrating achieving the Centenarian status. And to make that proclamation is Second Ward Commissioner Mario Aliva.
So today, actually, we have a resident who lives in the Second Ward. She turned 100 on October 6th. So we wanted to have a proclamation. We did the proclamation and gave it to her. She couldn't be here, so her birthday was the 6th. We met her and gave her the proclamation at home. So we're going to just read this into the record. And would you like to do it?
No, good.
Okay. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing significant milestones in the lives of individuals residing in the community. And whereas Violet McKeever reached the significant milestone on October 6, 2019, attaining 100 years old. And whereas Violet, born in Tamacqua, a county, I'm sorry, a borough in eastern Schuylkill County, Pennsylvania, moved to Greenview Lane in Haverfordtown in 1949, where she continues to reside. And whereas she attended grade school and high school in Tamacqua and then attended Drexel University, where she graduated with a degree in home economics. And whereas Violet is the mother of 11 children and proud grandmother of 15 grandchildren and has the honor of being a great-grandmother to nine. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania offer our deepest congratulations to Violet McKeever and wish her continued health and happiness. Proclaim this 15th day of October 2019, Andy Lewis President, Larry Holmes Vice President. I'm sure she's watching. I'm sure she's watching. She was not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next proclamation this evening is to James Velligan on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and joining. James, this evening is his father, Brian, mother Ellen, and his sister Sophia. And James is resident of the Fifth Ward, so I have the distinct pleasure of presenting this proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud James A. Velligan of the Constellation District Boy Scouts of America, Boy Scout Troop Number 19, Bryn Mawr, Pennsylvania, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout by completing his Eagle Scout project. And whereas James, a 16-year-old rising junior at Haverford High School, is the 168th Eagle Scout from Troop 19. And whereas to reach this milestone of Eagle Scout, James's Eagle Scout project was for the Haverford Township Little League Caracang commencing June 1st and was completed on June 21st, 2019. James and his troop refurbished all doors and window cages around the baseball park and spruced up and mulched a flower bed. And finally, they erected a second batting cage behind the major league field in time for tournament baseball season. Whereas this project was of particular importance to James, he played baseball there for the Reds in minor league and then the Indians in major league. This project provided a means for James to give back to Haverford Township and to the next generation of Haverford Township baseball players. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates James Velligan for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges and new opportunities. Proclaimed this 15th day of October 2018 by the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners. Congratulations. Someone tell me to take a picture here? Oh, great, thanks.
You know how to do it? It's locked.
I don't know. I think you can.
Okay. I see the shot.
Good? Our luck.
I know.
Okay. Yep, good, thanks. Next proclamation this evening is to Command Sergeant Major Jeffrey Hill. And to make this proclamation, offer this proclamation is Vice President of the Board and Sixth Ward Commissioner Larry Holmes.
Mr. President, members of the public, it's particularly my honor to present this proclamation. I, just this summer, buried my dad, and he was able to be buried with military honors. And I'm the father of a son who is now in his third year at a service academy. So the service of anybody, any great patriot, is very important to me. And so if I may. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of military adults in our community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to recognize and thank Command Sergeant Major Jeffrey Hill, United States Army Retired, for his selfless service in the U.S. Army Reserve and the Pennsylvania Army National Guard from 1970 through 2008. And whereas Command Sergeant Major Hill of the 103rd Engineer Battalion was also deployed to Iraq and Kuwait during 2007 and 2008. And whereas military and volunteer services go hand in hand, specifically Volunteer Master Ranger at Independence National Historical Park in Philadelphia, Volunteer Representative with the employer's support for the Guard and Reserve, visiting patriotic employers in Delaware, Chester, and Montgomery Counties, Volunteer at Symphony Square Assisted Living, Commander of Shandler Pincus Post 305 of the Jewish War Veterans of the United States of America, Member of American Legion Post 405, the Benjamin Franklin Post, Member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 6956, Member of Military Order of Foreign Wars, Member of the British Officers Club of Philadelphia, and a former commander of the First Regiment Veteran Corps and the Artillery Corps Washington Greys, a veterans' organization supporting the 103rd Engineer Battalion. And whereas prior to military life, Jeffrey Hill grew up in northeast Philadelphia, graduated from Northeast High School in 1966, received a Bachelor of Fine Arts from Tyler School of Art, Temple University in 1970, worked as an artist for TV Guide magazine, then moved into the printing and paper industries, working for RAS Paper Company, Central Paper Company, and Unisource Paper, married with two daughters, with one serving as an engineer and another as an artist for Pottery Barn. His wife Grace is a graphic artist, potter, fabric artist, and stained glass artist. Now therefore be proclaimed this 15th day of October 2019 that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania hereby thanks Command Sergeant Major Jeffrey Hill, United States Army Retired, for your many selfless contributions. Our blessings go with you as you face new opportunities and challenges this 15th day of October 2019.
Ward Commissioner Steve Demilia. And Second Ward Commissioner Mario Aliva.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Board. And I asked Commissioner Aliva to join me because he is the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Many times, ladies and gentlemen, people ask me what makes it such a great town to live in. It's the people in this township. And it's Civic Associations like the Westgate Hills Civic Association that makes this township so great, indeed makes our neighborhood so great. Chip came to me about, I guess, a year ago, over a year ago, and talked to me about the trail. And him and I got together, and I thought it was a great idea. And Chip and the Civic Association did a wonderful job of organizing several events, cleanup events. They had tools, they had water, they had pretzels, everything. And a lot of community members did show up and participated in the cleanup and eventually the creation of the trail, the Westgate Trail. I want to thank Tim Denny as well for his support in that. He was very instrumental in getting some volunteers, professional volunteers, to help us with the trail. And the Parks and Recreation Board, some of them are here, agreed with that, so I'm thankful for that as well. And you know what? No one in the Civic Association expected any recognition, but I thought it was important to do so to show our residents that we are indeed a great neighborhood. We have great volunteers, and I just want them to understand how hard these people work for the community. They get nothing for it, obviously, but the pride of a job well done. So this is a little proclamation. The Board of Commissioners of Township of Haverford wish to thank the Westgate Hills Civic Association for their dedication, commitment, and teamwork in the beautification of the Westgate Hills Trail extension to the Darby Creek Trail. And accepting is Chip Gallagher. He's the president, right? You're president now?
Yes, yes. And also, we wanted to thank Steve for all his support and providing Westgate Hills pieces.
Is that the right size? Did you get the right size for Steve? Is that the right size?
It's not a double. It's not a double.
It is an XL, so hopefully it doesn't shrink.
If I just might add, Chip here, his father is my next-door neighbor, so it's all about community. These are people who are living in the community, and now his son is now doing great things in our community, too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we'd like to recognize and thank the many volunteers that made the 25th Annual Haverford Township Day the success that it was. And to offer that tribute, proclamation is Tim Denny, our Director of Parks and Rec.
Jimmy Garrity, come up with me, please.
Your better half, the emcee.
First, I want to thank Andy for allowing me to read this proclamation. Since I'm on my way out, I just wanted to personally thank, not everybody could make it, but for those of you who were able to attend, we had a great 25th Haverford Township Day. And going through some of my files, getting ready to move out, I found a picture of the first Haverford Township Day. There I am, when my beard was a little darker. So it's been 25 years. Jimmy's been on the stage with me for 25 years. And Diane Josepher could not be here because her daughter just had her first grandchild. But the baby was born around midnight, Friday night, and she was at her post Saturday morning during the flea market. So a special shout-out to Diane Josepher, who's been with me from the first year. And Janice, have you been from the first year?
I was, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So it's been a great crew, and it's changed over the years. But I just thought with this being the 25th, and also my final one, that I asked Andy if we could recognize the volunteers who are here. So I'll just read the first part, and then Jimmy, I'll ask you to read the official part for the Commissioners. Whereas the Board of Commissioners, Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of volunteers in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud the Haverford Township Day Volunteer Committee. And whereas the 25th Haverford Township Day was held on Saturday, October 5, 2019, and thousands of residents and non-residents of all ages attended this festive celebration of community, and this day would not be possible were not for the dedication of the volunteers who begin planning six months in advance and who coordinate the parade, the flea market, the crafts, the green zone, the sponsors, the food, the children's rides, and the entertainment in conjunction with the Township Parks and Recreation Department, along with Public Works, the stadium, and the Police Department.
Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, maybe I'm losing it here, Tim, right here, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that the Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledges, congratulates, and thanks the volunteers and the committee for your many contributions to the day and our community with your long hours and dedicated work. We look forward to celebrating Haverford Township Day for years to come, proclaimed this 15th day of October 2019. The difference between, excuse me, Tim, but I got to show the people, Tim's proclamation here, you know, I'm 20 years older, Tim, and my readings. Okay? We got to do it that way, the old eyesight, you know?
Anyway, I know, especially I remember Phil DiNino, who was sort of the grandfather of Haverford Township Day, who first approached us many years ago, and Betty Farrell, who worked with us way back. So with that, I'm going to ask any volunteers who are here from Haverford Township Day Committee, if you could come up forward, please, and just be acknowledged.
Want to get a picture, Tim? Tim, are we going to take a picture? Everybody in?
Everybody smile?
Thank you, Mario.
Should I stay here, or should I sit?
Stay right here.
Jimmy, we're not quite ready for that. Hey, Mario, that's not quite, not quite ready for that yet.
We're not quite ready for that yet, Jim.
Yep.
We're not ready?
Yeah.
Oh.
One more minute. Just going to squeeze one thing here on the agenda. Last-minute request by Alan Semel, head of the Darby Creek Valley Association, to make a brief tribute to Tim Denny, who is retiring after almost 40 years of wonderful service.
The Darby Creek Valley Association is a nonprofit?
Step up to the mic, please. Thank you.
Can you do that? So Darby Creek Valley Association is a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization. Tim has been a member of this organization for, we're saying a quarter of a century, because nonprofits aren't always the best record-keepers, so we're somewhere around a quarter of a century. But we wanted to salute and to celebrate Tim's time at Haverford and also for his journey after his job. And also to salute and thank him for the work that he's done with Haverford Township and the environment and the, obviously, the reserve, and Tim's work and diligence for Darby Creek and Darby Creek Valley, the watershed, and the communities around it. So, Tim, we wanted to salute you and to celebrate with you your retirement. Best of luck.
Next, we have a proclamation to be given to our Rec Director, Tim Denny, on his retirement. And to offer that proclamation is Commissioner Jim McGarrity, who chaired the Park and Rec Committee of the Board of Commissioners for over 15 years, and I think, and now more recently, Commissioner Mario Aliva has done it for the last 10 years. So they'll make a joint proclamation and presentation to Tim Denny. Do you want to come forward, Tim?
Boy, it's Tim's night out, huh? I'll tell you. Mario and I are going to make a few comments at the end of the proclamation, so we both have some things to say about that, Tim. Ready, Tim? And now we're reading the big print, so I shouldn't have as much problem. Whereas the Haverford Township was privileged to initially hire Tim Denny in February 1980 as a CETA employee to coordinate the field permitting system. At that time, there was no recreation department and no funding. In March of 1981, Tim became a regular employee of the township when he was hired as recreation coordinator to supervise the programs that he had started. In 1984, he was appointed program director. And in 1986, he was named Director of Recreation. All good moves on the part of Haverford Township. During this time period, many activities were needed, and the department revenues increased dramatically. The department services continued to expand along with revenue generated, and a second full-time employee was added in 1988. And I think that second-time employee is right here, sitting in front of me, Mr. Barrett. In 1995, Tim worked with Civic Council to initiate the first Haverford Township Day, which has become our premier community event enjoyed by thousands of residents. As the department grew, Tim took on a greater role in park development. In 1995, Tim met with the parents of children with special needs, and the dream of a park for people for all disabilities and ages was born. Over the next three years, Tim raised more than a quarter of a million dollars, $250,000, and along with the community volunteers designated and built Merry Place. In 1998, the Haverford State Hospital closed, and a 10-year odyssey began over how to develop the property. During this time, more than 100 public meetings were held, and I was tired, to solicit community input on future use of the property. In 2007, Tim was named Assistant Township Manager, charged with overseeing his vision of the creation of Haverford Reserve, developing nationally-recognized first-class community recreation facility, which is the pride of our community and the envy of our neighbors. The other townships wished they had what we have, and they all say that, and they all will admit that. The Reserve includes a synthetic turf field, three grass ball fields, the Freedom Playground, five miles of trails, a dog park, a $35,000, $35,000 square-foot geothermal-powered LEED certified community recreation and environmental center.
Over the course of his long career, Tim has acquired more than $5 million in grants for township parks and trail projects, and the department has garnered numerous state and professional honors, culminating in the 2013 Green Park Award from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the development of Haverford Reserve. And in 2016, Haverford Township Parks and Recreation Department was named the first-ever Agency of the Year by the Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Society. We were there for that. That was wonderful. Whereas during his tenure, Tim has worked with countless community groups, including the school district, civic council, youth sports groups, the Darby Creek Valley Association, and the Haverford Ministries to promote the value of community parks and recreation. And whereas Tim has served under four township managers and eight presidents of the Board of Commissioners, while the Parks and Recreation Department has grown from one man, from a one-man show, to 15 full-time employees and 30 part-time employees, along with over 120 seasonal employees, and generates well over $1 million of revenue annually to offset the expenses. And whereas during the above-time periods, Tim also served on the Youth Aid Panel as the President of Haverford Township Ministries, not being a minister, President of the PA Parks and Recreation Society Community Branch, and a President, and as President of the Haverfordtown Optimist Club. And whereas Tim and his wife Diane are lifelong residents, and together they've raised five children, an avid basketball player, Tim gets together at Grassland Park with friends, how he has for 50 years, to play old-man basketball. That's what they call it. I don't know. I don't know why. Tim stays fit by working out at the Crack with his youngest son, Johnny. Hi, Johnny. He just raised his hand. Now in retirement, he can spend more time on his game with his family and friends. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford wish to thank Tim Denny for his vision, leadership, and dedication to his profession, to his township. Proclaim this 15th day of October 2019, Township of Haverford, Andy Lewis President.
Take a picture.
Come on, Johnny, come on over here. Get it right here.
Get it right here.
Well, we were going to make comments, but one of the comments I want to make is you heard all the presidents and all the politicians Tim Denny has worked under, so you see why he doesn't have too much hair up there. But I don't know, a lot of people don't know this, but at one time, and we won't mention any names or anything like that, but we were actually kicked out of the old township building. They didn't, this particular commissioner didn't want Haverford to have a recreation department. So Dick Straub at the time was the head of the park board, and he owned New Model Cleaning right up there by the lamplighter. And Tim and Dick Straub, myself and the rest of the park board at the time, decided we're going to meet at Mr. Straub's house and keep recreation going. And that's when Tim really set the place on fire, really got into things. Eventually, we managed to push that commissioner aside, and the other commissioners went along with what we should do, and that's have programs in Haverford Township, not only for the kids but for the adults and all that. And that's where Tim took the lead. And look at that, look where we came from, from meeting up on that second floor, the New Model Cleaning to today. And believe me, a lot of people wish that they had the kind of skills that Mr. Denny has. And I just want to say, I've done that Haverford Township Day with Joe Fraser coming down the road, and I'm going to do it one more time, but it's a little different this time. I'm going to say in that 1983 Oldsmobile convertible coming down Darby Road, where that Commissioner McGarrett is coming down Darby Road. Ladies and gentlemen, here he is, the Recreation Director for Haverford Township, the man who started Haverford Township's, what is it? I'm sorry, I'm getting all messed up here. Haverford Township Day. Ladies and gentlemen, here he is, more than anything, none other than Mr. Tim Denny. Tim Denny. All right, now I'll let Mario share.
All right. So I'm going to keep it short. I don't know, there's not enough words to describe Tim Denny to me. He's been, from the time I became commissioner, he has been a guide to me. Whereas in, when you become a commissioner, there's a lot of people pulling at you in all directions, and Tim kept me straight. You know, always, he's a good man, great father, as you can see. I saw that one day, I was over at Tim's house, and the hot dog mobile pulls into the driveway. You know why? Because his son's favorite food was hot dogs. Now that's a great father. And I have to tell you that that was, you know, I just, he's such a great guy, just a wonderful person, a wonderful human being, and just a person who you can, who you can trust. And so, that's hard to find in politics. Such a great man. And so, thank you, Tim, for all your work here. Thank you so much.
Just so everybody knows, the hot dogs that he was talking about and the young man is right over there, Jonathan, right there. And he, many a time up on stage with Tim and I, was very helpful in our Haverford Township days for those twenty-five years. Way to go, Jonathan.
Thanks Mario, thanks Jimmy. Tell you a little story about Johnny being up on stage. One year, we were announcing, Jimmy and I, and Johnny says to me, "Tim, how about the prayer?" I said, "When are we going to do the prayer?" He says, "Do you want me to do the prayer?" And I said, "Sure Johnny, you take the prayer." And he steps up to the microphone and he says, "Hot dogs for everyone." I said, "That was a perfect prayer for Haverford Township Day." A few words, if you know me, I always like to say a few words. First of all, thank you so much, you know? It's just... One of my favorite quotes is, if you remember Craig Sager, who was a sort of flamboyant sportscaster who dressed in wild outfits, and he gave a talk a few years ago before he passed away, and he said, "He said, 'Time is not something that can be bought. Time is not something you can bargain with God. Time is not something in endless supply. Time is merely how we live our lives.'" I have been very fortunate that, for the past forty years, I've had a chance to live my life impacting the community that not only I grew up in, but that Diane grew up in and we're raising our kids in. And that's a wonderful, wonderful thing. I've been fortunate that for the past forty years, I've worked with just wonderful people. People that I have worked with in the department, going back to Mary Trope, for whom Mary Place is named after, Steve Younger, who's sort of an icon in Haverford Township, had a huge influence on me. Of course, Brian and I have worked together forever. People like Jerry Glenn out in the community doing the things that they do, and just on and on and on, Alan. Just, it's been such a great opportunity. And often, I think back to when Dick Straub first interviewed me. You know, I had been a Vista volunteer in a juvenile prison in Columbia, South Carolina, so one of the things that qualified me for CEDA was that I had no money. So, and the job paid $8,000. As I told Amy, my salary has more than doubled since then. And the CEDA was a grant that they got for a certain amount of time, and I thought to myself, maybe I can turn this into a job if I can come up with one good idea a week. That was my goal. And I've always viewed myself and this department as a conduit to the community. There's just great energy in this community, and I think more than anything else is to tap into that. People like Chip Gallagher back here, Steve alluded to, and Bill Gormley, and all the great people in the community who are trying to do things. And more than anything else, our role, as I see it, is to tap into that energy and be the conduit to try and facilitate things. And it's just been great. A lot of times, my role is blurry. I've been involved with the Youth Aid Panel, Darby Creek Valley Association, the Ministerium, Hilltop Civic Association. And so, am I doing that as Tim Denny resident or Tim Denny director? I don't know. And I don't care. You know, it all works together for the good of the community, and we are fortunate that we have such a great, great community here. And I got a call last week from Tom Banner, which was really nice of Tom. He's living down in South Carolina now. He's been retired for a number of years, but he was township manager who hired me way back then, and we had a nice conversation. And I remember when Tom retired, he got up in front and he named all the meetings that he had been to, and he had them all enumerated. And as I said to the park board, some members who are here, if you could just raise your hand, any park board members who are here, you know, I've been fortunate to work with so many good people on the park board. And I said to them at the last meeting, I think this is about my four-hundredth park board meeting, I don't know how many hundreds of these meetings, so I think actually I probably have broken Tom's record, and I have a sense that maybe it's a record that will stand. But it's been a lot of meetings, it's been a lot of years, it's been a lot of good people. It's just been a great, great run, and I am so grateful. And I know that I'm leaving the department in good hands. And Brian, Eileen, I don't know if anybody else is here, that they will do a great job in carrying on all of this. And so with that, I want to just say again, thank you, and who knows, maybe I'll be working for Larry over in Marple in a few years. Jimmy just asked that I give a shout out to Wilbur Clever, so I'm happy to do. Wilbur's a great, great man, and I'm sure he would be here if he could. One of my all-time favorites.
Thank you, Tim. Back to the agenda. Agenda item number three, Commissioner Committee Updates. Are there any Commissioner Committee Updates?
Mr. President, just a report from Finance. I think we are on schedule for all the commissioners to receive their budget by October 31, their draft budget.
Thank you, Holmes. Any other updates? Sure.
Is there any update on the smoking issue in the parks?
I don't know, I'd have to ask Mr. Denny. I think it's in the park. You want to reply to that, Tim? Is it, I think we referred to parks and rec? Did you hear the question? Question's about smoking, smoking in the parks. It was referred to.
I guess, I'm sorry. Let the, as Mario would say, the park board asked for another month to go out and actually speak with the user groups and get back and see, get the feedback from the user groups and use the park board, and use the parks. And that was the recommendation the park board was to allow them another month to go out. I think the chairman's here, Dave McGardle's here, and the vice chair are both here. And that was their recommendation, to give them time to go out and speak to the user groups and see if they can get feedback on the issue.
Hopefully, we'll be able to address this in December. If not, I'll move it into new business at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Any other Commissioner Committee Updates? Agenda number four, we're going to move that Township Manager Update to, after the approval warrants. So we'll now have the Township Auditor update, Ross Anderson.
Oh, oh, you can't do that.
It's locked. It's locked.
You can face that way if you want.
Sorry.
Thanks, Alan.
All right, we know it's your first time.
I reviewed the warrants and expenditures for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I want to say thank you, Tim Denny, for your service, and I hope you have a great retirement.
Agenda item number six is the Citizens Forum. We have twenty minutes allotted for registered speakers, and we also have twenty minutes allotted for anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item, which the proclamations would be part of that. So we'll start, we have four registered speakers this evening. I would ask you to come forward, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes, if you would. Our speaker, I'll state your name for you, Liz Goldberg.
Hello, thank you. My name is Liz Goldberg. I'm resident of the Sixth Ward of Haverford Township. I wanted to come tonight really to just thank all of you. You don't get that all the time. I wasn't able to be present at the September Board Meeting when the Bonner Fire Company issue was hotly discussed, but I know that you heard from a very vocal and what I think is a minority of our community, who were displeased with your decision to close the firehouse. And I wanted to come and say that there are many of us who strongly supported that decision and are deeply grateful for the clarity of thought and the courage that you demonstrated. And in the days and weeks that have followed, I've had many conversations with friends and family about this issue. And I have to say, I've been really heartened in those conversations, and I wanted to share with you what those conversations reminded me of. And that's the fact that many of us do understand that our constitution is not a document of absolutes, it's a balancing act. And we're a nation tasked with balancing rights and responsibilities and a desire to protect individual freedom, but also protect our communal good. And so in that vein, you know, I have the right to practice whatever religion I want, but I can't proselytize at my kid's public school. And I have freedom of speech, but I can't yell fire in a crowded theater. And I have the freedom of assembly, but if I want to stand with an extremist racist misogynistic hate group, I cannot then serve as a first responder and have it for township. We have tremendous rights and privileges in this country, but they're not unqualified, and we would not have a civil society if they were. So I thank you for taking the action that you did and handling this with such speed and such decisiveness, and I thank you for trusting us and treating us like adults and knowing that we would understand the decision here. The government did not take away anyone's right to assemble. It upheld hard-fought anti-discrimination policies and the right of every resident of this great township, regardless of our race, our nationality, our religion, our gender, our sexual orientation, to trust that the first responders, who we must call when we are at our most vulnerable, will respect our humanity and will protect us to the fullest extent that they're able. So thank you.
Thank you, Liz, for your comments. Most appreciated. And you're right, we don't get many compliments, so thank you. That goes with the job. Second registered speaker is Dave McGardle, McGardle from the Parks Board.
Commissioner Lewis, thank you for giving me a moment to say a little about Tim Denny. I am the current Chair of the Park and Recreation Board. I'm here tonight to praise Tim. Everybody has stolen everything I was going to say about you, Tim. I want to personally thank you for being the person that you are. I have been a member of this township for twenty-five years. I've been on the Parks Board for the past twenty years. Tim is a friend, a mentor, he's a person that you can go to for anything you want. He always had an open mind. Tim Denny is the epitome of recreation in this department, or in this township. There is no question. There's not a corner of this township that you can walk to and not say, "Tim Denny was involved in this." Tim, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for being the person you are, and I wish you the best in your future. Tim, thank you. Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our third registered speaker is Michelle Alvarez, also from the Park Board.
Michelle Alvarez, 134 Hastings Avenue. I am the Vice Chairman of the Parks Board, but as some of you may know, and many of you may not, I have probably known Tim the longest, other than his wife Diane, who's not here, or Jimmy. My first day as the Assistant Director of Recreation in Lower Marion Township was July 1st, 1980. I was on the budget, Tim was CEDA. We did a lot of work together, in particular because the polo field is shared and permitted through both recreation departments. And the following year, we particularly spent a lot of time together because the polo field was the main parking lot for the US Open at Marion Golf Course in 1981. So we did a lot of work together in coordinating how to get the leagues off the fields and where they're going to be and so forth. But in any event, having been a recreation and parks professional and having been on this Parks Board for about ten years now, I have to say that Tim Denny is Parks and Recreation in Pennsylvania. He is known throughout the state, even though he didn't go to college for Parks and Recreation as I had done, he is known in the state of Pennsylvania and the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society for putting Haverford Township on the map. When Tim came here, no one knew what Haverford Township was and Parks and Recreation. No one would want to come here to do their internship or do a job here. Lower Marion was the place to be. Radnor was the place to be. Marple Newtown was the place to be. Tim has now made it that Haverford Township is the place to be, and we have the premier recreation and parks facilities and programs out of all of those townships I've just named. So we can thank Tim Denny for his years of diligence and stick-to-it-iveness in pursuing the things that he felt passionate about, and I too share his passion being in this field. And he will forever be Mr. Parks and Recreation at Haverford Township. And I thank all the commissioners now and in years past, and the township managers and so forth, for seeing to it that Tim was kept with us and promoted through the ranks. And looking back thirty-nine and a half years ago, CEDA employee at $8,000 is pretty incredible. So thank you, Tim, and I look forward to still being friends in the future.
Our fourth registered speaker is Maria Pardini, Parks Board.
I wrote my speech out, so bear with me. My name's Maria Pardini, I live at 715 Naylor's Run, and I too would like to speak about Tim Denny. Even though I've only been a small part of Tim's many years of service to the township, I just couldn't let this moment- I just couldn't let this moment pass without sharing some thoughts about Tim and the impact that he has had on the township. And I promise this won't be a roast. I was first introduced to Tim by way of his reputation. I knew of Tim before I actually knew who Tim was. And lots of people think they know Tim Denny. It seems everyone and anyone who has ever played on a field, filed a permit, shot a basketball, or threw a football knows of Tim Denny. And if you listen to some people, Tim Denny controls every single thing that happens in Havreford Township. In fact, I'm sure he actually wishes he really had some of the power that some people in this town think he commands. There were many, and then I actually met Tim when I joined a small group of committed individuals who helped build a playground in 20, around 2010. And that is when I began to realize what the true gift of Tim Denny was to Havreford Township. There were many struggles that that group faced in the building of the playground, but through them all, Tim remained the calm, level-headed, and practical captain of that ship that at times literally seemed like it was the Titanic. But under his leadership and direction, we persevered, and Freedom Playground stands today as a testament to what people who feel empowered by their leaders can do. And that group was empowered by Tim. After the playground adventure, I joined the Parks and Rec Board, and this is where I got to really see Tim in action. I saw him in community meetings that sometimes contained Havertown's own version of the Hatfields and the McCoys, where those groups would enter the meeting as mortal enemies and would leave after an half an hour spent with Tim inviting each other for Thanksgiving dinners. I saw him navigate disgruntled residents through disputes with their neighbors about sheds, swings, bathrooms, and basketball courts. I saw him navigate the tightrope of politics in this township while handling each of the commissioners' concerns with grace and patience. But most importantly, I learned who Tim really was and what he cares most deeply about. I learned he is a family man with a strong faith, and that he loves his family greatly and keeps their needs at the forefront of his life. I learned how passionate Tim is about play and giving all children, regardless of their abilities, an equal footing in every facet of recreation in this township. I learned that Mary Place is really his baby, and his love for it and dedication to it have made it one of the premier locations, not just in the township, but the county. And I learned that men like Tim Denny are hard to come by, and that his character, his morality, and his love of life will be very hard shoes to fill, and that life being in its day will probably not really be the same. So, Tim, I thank you for your example, your leadership, but most especially, your friendship. Thank you.
That concludes the registered speaker portion of the agenda. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on an agenda item, including anyone who wants to comment about Tim, or have we had enough comments about Tim? Please.
Michelle Alvarez, I have a postscript to add. I'd like, on behalf of myself and the majority of the Parks Board, to encourage all of you commissioners to give strong consideration to promoting Brian Barrett into Tim's job. As you all know, he's been here for over 30 years, and we truly need the continuity of someone like Brian to carry us through all these capital projects that we have planned, not only now in this bond issue, but in the bond issues coming forward. So I'd like to put in a good word, having been a recreation and parks professional myself, Brian is more than qualified for this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if that's a motion, I second it.
Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item will have an opportunity to do so under Agenda Item Number 17, which is a continuation of the citizens forum. We'll now turn to Agenda Item Number 7, which is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of September 9, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 9, 2019.
Moved by Commissioner D'Amelio, second. Seconded by Mr. Hart, I think. Any questions or discussions, edits, comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Minutes stand approved. Agenda item number 8, approval of the warrants. Vice President Holmes.
Oh, thank you. Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 10 of 2019 totaling $5,713,413.35, comprising general sewer fund payroll for September 19, 2019, in the amount of $663,143.91. The general sewer fund payroll for October 3, 2019, in the amount of $638,457.99. General fund disbursements, number 10 of 2019, in the amount of $3,494,613.43. Sewer fund disbursements, number 10 of 2019, in the amount of $282,641.71. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 10 of 2019, in the amount of $108,252.75. Capital project fund disbursement, number 10 of 2019, in the amount of $519,575.10. And a credit card statement, ending September 27, 2019, in the amount of $6,728.46.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed this warrant. Any questions that were raised by his review were answered to his satisfaction by our finance department personnel. He recommends their approval, as do I.
Thank you. All in favor of approval of the warrants signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Ice carry. Warrants approved. Now going to go to our township manager update. This is a new agenda item. It was actually my suggestion, conversations with our new township manager, not so new, I guess, but relatively new. I thought it'd be a good idea to have, Dave Berman is effectively our chief operating officer for the township. He is responsible to this board, but ultimately responsible to all of you as taxpayers and residents. And I thought it was a good idea to have him on a monthly basis kind of give an update on the state of the township, where, you know, what we're doing, and challenges, accomplishments, whatever it might be, give him an opportunity to educate and inform the public about what we're doing. A lot of good things are happening in Havreford Township, and we want our residents and taxpayers. So I give Dave this opportunity and look forward to many more in the future.
Mr. Lewis, thank you very much. Just a couple of brief items. The budget, following up on Mr. Holmes, that will be publicly presented for the first time on November 18. Board of Commissioners will discuss it again on December 2, and ultimately, it will be considered for adoption on the 9th of December at your regular meeting that month. Going back, the meetings in November, you're going to have a regular meeting on the 12th, which is a Tuesday, that's due to the Veterans Day holiday, and the budget meeting, as I mentioned a moment ago, that's on November 18. Lot has happened in five months. We did have a serious flood earlier this year, and we've had two major bridges out. We've had Darby Road paved, and we're waiting to have Eagle Road paved later this month. We did a $1.7 million road project, and believe it or not, the contractor is coming back tomorrow to mill a couple of final areas, a small area of Beechwood and Dartmouth roads, where Pico had done some work as well. So we are holding money on the contractor, and we expect that the punch list will be completed sometime in the next few weeks. They're also back with their contractor, who has started the line striping earlier this week. Leaf collection schedule is posted. October 28 is the first week that we'll begin the schedule. It's posted on the internet, it's on our website, and if there are any questions about that, you can feel free to contact the township, and we'll share that. You know, it's subject to change, potential weather disruptions or other unforeseen conditions. I think a few years ago, we had a snowfall sometime in October, and that set everything back, but we're committed to doing the collection. All hands on deck for the leaf collection beginning October 28. So all of our Public Works crews will be working on leaf collection. Other projects will hold off at that time unless they're a real emergency or a real urgent project. We will post the schedule updates routinely. We've been trying to do a good job getting outreach through Facebook and social media and the website, and constant contact, and we'll continue to do that. And when we speak about those kinds of technologies that we're using to do some outreach, the new website will be rolled out sometime in early 2020. So that's all I have for now.
I just have one question relating to the punch list for the paving contractor. Is he, have they acknowledged and are willing to do all the items on the punch list, or they, is there some disagreement about some of those items? Because I have a number of issues in the Fifth Ward that I hope will be addressed.
We have not received any pushback from the contractor, but we have had limited communication. But we'll continue to push through Catania, the engineering firm that's overseeing the project.
I know there was like 50 items on the punch list.
Absolutely. It's a very, it's a lengthy punch list.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure we get it done right at the end of the day, so.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions for Dave? Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Back to the agenda, item number nine. Agenda items number nine through 16 were discussed in the work session last week, so unless there's some new information that comes to light or some additional questions by individual commissioners, this portion of the agenda should move relatively quickly. So Agenda Item Number Nine is a property tax assessment appeal.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Oliva.
I motion to approve a stipulation to the, to settle Delaware County, I'm sorry, Delaware County Court of Common Pleas case, CV 2008-009815 pertaining property, to a property tax assessment appeal for DC Folio number 22010241900525, Westchester Pike.
Which is the Falcon Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, I did have a follow-up question from last week. Is it, was this one of the situations where the school district council took the lead in negotiation of this settlement?
Yes.
Okay. So we were not involved, we were accepting the recommendation, but the actual negotiation was done by school district?
Yeah, that's generally the way all of the, all of the tax appeals are handled, because, you know, they have a, more of a.
Yeah, 70%.
Right. Okay. All right.
Yeah, well, just to follow up, just the public is clear, because you're counsel to the Board of Assessment, so you obviously didn't represent our interest at that time.
No. In fact, and when there's a matter that has anything to do with Havreford, I don't take any questions on Board of Assessment either.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
He's not here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. Yes. Agenda Item Number 10, reappointment of our certified public accountants.
Motion to reappoint Barbara Kane Thornton and company Township Independence Auditors for a final three-year period covering fiscal ending December 31, 2019, 2020, and 2021.
Second.
Commissioner Holmes, seconded by Commissioner Holmes. Yes. Any questions or discussion on this? Please call a roll.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. D'Amelio.
What are we talking about?
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll pass, because I don't know which one we're on, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, definitely. Yes.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 11, ordinance number P17, 2019, traffic second reading.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P17, 2019, rescinding a traffic restriction on the following highway. Rescinding from paragraph 175-92, Schedule 17, parking of commercial vehicles prohibited at all times, Morland Avenue, both sides from Lee Circle to Doe Road.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 12, ordinance number P21, 2019, fire losses, first reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P21-219, providing that in certain fire losses, the insurance company, association, or exchange shall transfer a portion of the insurance proceeds to a designated officer of the township to be held to security against the total cost of removing, repairing, or securing the damaged building, providing for fees, providing for penalties for violations, and setting forth procedures and requirements pertaining to the insurance proceeds and to the implementation of the ordinance in the township.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, I raised last week some questions about the nature of the organic state statute that empowered local governments like ours to adopt this ordinance, whether or not we could change thresholds in the, in the law. And I'm told we can't. I also, after discussion with one of my colleagues, gave me the excellent point that even if we were to change our thresholds, insurance industry isn't going to change what they do if every other township has certain thresholds, so it isn't really going to make a difference. So for that reason, I've abandoned any effort to make any, any changes to this law. I am going to vote against it, but I'm not going to spend any time trying to convince anyone to join me in that, but just to state, so the public understands why I would vote no, is that I'm not sure that I perceive the problem yet, and I do believe we're putting an impediment between people trying to collect on a fire loss, and our township has enough to do already without having articulated reasons for us to include this, this burden on the township and this burden on homeowners. But like I said, explaining my no vote, but I certainly heard a lot of intelligent reasons why we should do this at last week's work session, and I don't have a particularly valid response to them, so.
Any other questions?
Andy, John, does our local fire companies take any position on this?
I don't have enough knowledge to make any comments on it. I'm aware of what it's about, but we take no position on it at this time. It doesn't, it benefits the township, I think, more to get properties done. Am I correct with that? For fire damage that is not completed in timely manner, like we have a couple of houses now that have still had severe fires, they've been empty for, or no repairs for over a year, so I'm assuming that is some funding to help with that? Am I correct with that?
It would, it would require, in the event of a 60% or more loss of the property against the total value of the policy, it would allow that money to be placed in escrow so the township could ensure that the property doesn't become a blight on the community.
All right, so it really doesn't affect the fire companies. Our job is to obviously put the fire out as far as what happens afterwards. I think codes and the township takes a different stand than we would, so.
Sorry, can we just discuss this a little bit further, so I understand it clearly? I apologize. So if a resident's house burns down, is this what we're talking about? Even a residence home, not only commercial property, but residential homes as well?
Yes.
So when someone's house burns down and they have, I don't know, State Farm, so we're requiring State Farm to give a portion of the money that's supposed to go to the
Not really give it to the township, it's put in escrow so that the repairs get done. So that, you know, I mean, this is kind of a wild situation, and hopefully it doesn't happen, but, you know, somebody doesn't get a check from State Farm and then moves to another town and have a house that's in disrepair and no one to fix it.
I had one of those in my ward where, where the house for, for three years was a blighted neighbors and animals in the house, things like that, so this would prevent that from happening, and neighbors along Woodland Drive would do that for the last three years.
Yeah, it'll, it'll help. I mean, and I don't mean to correct everything, but it'll help with blighted properties. It won't necessarily become the be-all and end-all. I mean, we have had, remember, a couple meetings that we had, some other things that we are implementing to try and clean up any of those blighted houses, but this is just another, another tool in our kit.
Well, you know, I was vocal about this several months ago, about blight on homes. I just, I mean, if the resident, most residents, I would think, would have fixed their homes up that had a fire.
You'd like to think so, sure.
Yeah, I mean, you would like to think so. I think the majority of that happens. Am I wrong? Is that not happening, John?
Yes, most people do, but I know what the commissioner was speaking of about the house that sat empty for three years. That person took the check and left town.
Oh, that, yeah, that I understand.
And I think that's what that addresses. Am I correct with that?
So, so how about the, the person or the family that's not leaving town, and we take, what's the percentage that we're taking or holding in escrow?
None, but they can use it, they can use it for the repairs to the house.
So they're still going to be able to use it, right? They say, so they have to come to the township and say, listen, I'm going to do the roof now.
Right.
Right? We're going to hold that money.
Actually, let me, even though I'm opposed to this, I, let me explain though to you, because I, it only in a circumstance where 60% of the value of the house or more, 60% of the entire fire proceeds are going to fix the damage of the house, is it then put in escrow. So there is no mechanism where the township takes a share or does anything like that. If, if the damage is of a certain level, is high enough, then the township acts as an escrow agent and doles out the money to the contractors that do the work. It isn't, the money isn't kept from the homeowner if the homeowner does the, arranges for the repairs to be done. Any of our abandoned properties in town that are owned by, let's say, banks that have repossessed them, or owned by absentee people who are still subject to any mortgage are likely to have insurance. If they're not subject to any loan or any mortgage, they may not have insurance on it at all, and this will not affect in any way a house or a property that burns down that is not insured. So it doesn't create funds or anything like that, but it is not, my concern is just that we're just adding a, a level of bureaucracy here, but I'm not concerned about the township taking the money or.
And I didn't mean to, if I, if I, yeah, if it appeared that I was saying that, I apologize, that's not what I meant.
No, no, but you were asked, and it's a legitimate question.
I just wanted to know how, how someone whose house burned down, if they're, you know, if they're moving forward with the repair. I mean, I'd like to see what we're doing about these abandoned homes, and I was going to bring this up later, because we need to still address that. I don't know where we are with that, but we can't forget that as well.
If I may, this is not some extraordinary ordinance, and in fact, thanks to the township manager, it's on the agenda because for some reason it had not been enacted in the township. It is based on a state statute that is designed to protect the interests of municipalities. The state has, and the Governor's Center for Local Government Services actually lists the municipalities that have enacted this, and if you go to the Delaware County list, you will see that it is virtually every municipality in Delaware County except for Haverford, including Radnor, Springfield, you name it, they're on here because it is to protect the interest and to assure that, you know, it helps prevent blighted properties and protects the interest of the township in case someone tries to abandon it. So we are not creating some unusual animal, and, you know, municipalities, you know, have been enacting this since 1993, and by my count, it's about 30 municipalities just in Delaware County, and it's throughout the state. So we're not taking any action other than sort of thankfully bringing us up to date in, in doing so. The last municipality that enacted anything was in 2015, when Radnor did it, and before that, there were only two since the, since after 2007. It's been, you know, we're just coming to the table late, but thankfully, we're coming to the table.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda item number 13, ordinance number P22, 2019, traffic first reading.
President, I'll make a motion to adopt the first reading of traffic, P22, 2019, establishing traffic restrictions on the following highways. A stop intersection, Lee Circle, direction of travel is both at the intersection of Gaynor Road. Special parking zone established in front of 2455 Winfield Drive, in front of 162 Juniper Road, in front of 715 Woodland Drive, in front of 715 Preston Avenue, rescind in front of 707 Cricket Avenue, also rescind one space in front of 2925 Berkeley Road, and also one space in front of 1105 Darby Road.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any questions or discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda item number 14, ordinance number P23-2019, Old Marple Road, right-of-way, first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P23, 2019, authorizing the township to execute a quitclaim deed by which the township quitclaims any and all rights, title, and interest in the former southerly right-of-way of Marple Road in the common corner between Delaware County tax map parcel numbers 2213-107 and 2213-108, and compromising 11,090 square feet, 22541 acres, as shown on the attached Exhibit A, Marple Road deed exhibit plan, prepared by Mommoni Inc., dated August 5, 2019.
Second. Taken by Commissioner Siegel, seconded by Commissioner Wexler. Any question or discussion on this proposed ordinance? If not, please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda item number 15, resolution number 2161-2019, fee schedule amendment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt Resolution 2161 of 2019. Board of Commissioners hereby approving revisions to our fee schedule.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Holmes, taken by Commissioner Aliva. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President, we discussed this last week. The only change is to charging at our electric vehicle stations, an hour charge, that's a dollar per hour, and then we charge people after their charge is complete if they're still connected and keeping someone else from using it, $2 per hour. And that is the only change to the fee schedule.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda item number 16 is contract, Public Works Department upgrade for our brine machine.
Mister, motion to enter into a contract with AccuBrine, which includes the upgrade to the brine machine components, as well as the upgrade to the salt tank freshwater nozzles in the amount of $32,061.8.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Wexler, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any questions or discussion? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Agenda item number 17 is a continuation of the Citizens Forum for both non-agenda items and agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any subject matter? Please just state your name and your address, and try to leave me your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Hannah Terlich. I live at 412 Mill Road, and I just wanted to say something brief about the value of libraries, which is a topic you've discussed recently, and I'm hoping you'll bring up again in the near future. My mother was the Director of Cultural Programs and the Director of Development at our hometown public library, and while this particular style of parenting might be criticized today, I highly value the many, many, many hours of unsupervised time that I had roaming around the Lewiston, Maine public library, pulling out any book that I found interesting. I have vivid memories of poring over Birds of America, John James Audubon, and just letting my imagination run completely wild. Whether or not that came out to be a good result as an adult is probably up for debate, but I'm very, very proud of my mother for her work at that library, and I treasure my hours as a child in that library. I just bring that up because I know, or I'm hoping in the near future, you as commissioners will be discussing the future of the library, whether it will be relocated, renovated, or none of the above. I'm hoping for one of those two things, and I'm hoping that we can really make an amazing public library for this incredible township. So that's just my plug for, for us all thinking about what can be possible for our public library and what we can do to serve all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on an agenda or non-agenda, agenda item? Okay, thank you. Concludes the Citizens Forum. Now turn to agenda item number 18, which is new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring before the board?
Uh, Andy.
Commissioner Aliva.
Yeah, my, I just would like to bring up, my appointment to the EAC has stepped off, so I would like to appoint, can I do that?
Yes.
Point a, another person. I'd like to appoint Alyssa Carpenter to my position in the, the second position of the EAC.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Aliva. No vote there? That's your appointment? Anybody else have any other new business?
Just to make it official, do we need Mr. Solicitor to agree that he can do an appointment in new business and then he can do the appointment?
I don't know that we really would need to do that here. I think it's just administrative.
It's, it's his.
I think we're, thank you.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I just, there is no work session in November, right? So I, as I stated earlier, I would like for us to get an update on what we're doing about vacant properties, other than what we just passed this evening, so maybe we can discuss it in, we have a work session in December?
No.
Can we, can we put that on the agenda?
Sure.
Because it's, you know, still an ongoing issue in, in the township. Thank you.
Any other new business? Okay. Turning to other business, start with Commissioner D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were two events this past weekend, which unfortunately I could not attend, and one that I regularly attend, and the other one is fairly new, one's the Italian Festival. I heard it was a wonderful event. I'm sorry I missed it. Did you go?
I did, I was there. It was a great time.
From the pictures I saw online and social media, it was packed.
It was. It was a lot different than last year. It was really, there was a lot of people.
Good weather, beautiful weather.
Beautiful day. Great music.
Fortunately, I had family, couldn't make it there. And then there was the K-9 competition. Who won that, John? I'm curious this year.
Overall, Philadelphia won the overall competition.
Oh, Philadelphia won? Wow.
How did we fare?
Our K-9 scored very high, but Philadelphia did a great job, they really did.
Well, we've won it several times, haven't we?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry I missed that. It was great. I certainly want to thank the police and all of our emergency services and all their firefighters and EMS and paramedics for everything they do, but that, that's a wonderful event. I'm sorry I missed it. I would like to see some pictures, if there are any. You know, Westgate Hill Civic Association, what can I say about them, the work that they've done, they continue to do, they will be doing in the future with Santa coming to the park. They do a wonderful event there up at Westgate Park with the assistance of, I know, a fire company bringing in Santa. So it's just a wonderful organization, and I can't thank them enough for everything they've done. Tim, what can I say? I'm going to miss you. You're one of the most humble and honest men I ever met, and we share some, some same beliefs, and especially on JFK, or the Kennedys in general, and I'll miss talking to you about that, but I'm sure I'll be calling you whenever there's a good show on or a book.
Tim thinks Kennedy was killed by aliens also? Is that what? Taking a shot at you, Steve.
Come on. You don't want to have. Hey, don't make fun of my guy. Also, to remind everyone, November 5th is Election Day, so it's always very important for everyone to come out and vote, vote for your favorite candidate, but please exercise your right to vote, as, you know, we have our military people out there supporting our, our right to freedom, and one of them is to vote, and we really should do everything we can to get out the vote. I think we could still, you can still obtain an absentee ballot. I think it's still, they might know when, it's the end of this month, I think, close to it? Anybody know the date?
At least another week to do it.
A week.
Yeah, at least. As long as it gets back to, as long as it gets back to the county by the Friday before.
Right, and, and you can do it online. If you're in Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania, you can get.
You can apply for one online.
You can apply for one online, you can't vote online, so, I mean, it's important that anybody do that as quickly as possible. Sorry, Steve.
It's okay, no, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to vote, and if you need an absentee ballot, that's what you do. Again, as Commissioner Holmes said, it's not to vote, that's for you to get the ballot and send it back to the county, so your vote can be counted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner D'Amelio, Commissioner Aliva.
So I want to remind everybody to vote. Obviously, we don't have a work session in November because of Election Day. I am not going to reveal who I'd like to win, but there are, I have worked with some very good people up here, so, anyway, so moving on, Tim Denny has been, as I said before, has been a great, a great force in this township, not just for recreation, but he's a good person, and he really has, has done great things for Havre Township, not just, you know, Havre Township Day and Merry Place and all those places that we all go to, and, you know, the reserve is incredible. What a lot, what I got to see that a lot of you don't see is all the work that goes into, into some of this stuff, and all the nights, and all the weekends, and all the long nights away from, from his wife and family. And, Tim, I really appreciate that, I really appreciate what you did to, really to change, because there were some dark days here in Havre Township, and, and Tim, he had a difficult fight on his hands, and, and he fought, but he fought the ethical fight. He's, he really did a great job, and, and came through everything, and, and for that, we owe him just a debt of gratitude for the reserve and for some of those things, for having that vision to fight for that place. It's just incredible. Every time I go by there, I just think about what happened during those days, and, and...
Steep slopes.
Yeah, the steep slopes, and, and the maps, and just all the stuff that was going on at that time, and, and how it turned out really is a testament to who he is. So, thank you, Tim, again, for all you've done. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Commissioner McCluskey.
Just want to make some of the residents in the third ward aware of two upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night in this room, PICO is hosting an open house. It's not a meeting being run by the township, but it is being run by PICO, and it's an open house. To talk about some of the upcoming projects they have in Havre Township, the residents who will be specifically affected by this upcoming work, by these upgrades that PICO are doing, were mailed invitations from PICO, but everyone is invited to attend, but just so residents who hear this understand, PICO's intention is to have the meeting be about the upcoming projects and those areas of residence. It's multiple wards, including in the third ward, the Grassland Park Oakland Firehouse neighborhood, which, without any comments, I will say definitely needs some upgrades from PICO, so hopefully I will learn some information tomorrow night as well. On October 23rd, we're also having the, our biannual constituent meeting that I co-host with Commissioner Siegel and Commissioner Hart. Any resident that can't make the meeting tomorrow from PICO, I'll, I'll just have the information that they presented and be able to summarize for them. And obviously, any issue is, we welcome questions and concerns, and we'll also have an update on what's going on in the township, so that's October 23rd.
What time?
Seven o'clock, in this room. And we'll have, as we normally do, some township manager, police. I appreciate the update, I, time is important for when it'll start, but yes, seven o'clock, October 23rd. And then, I would just like to say that, to publicize for the, for the library, they have their third annual Dewey Decimal Run Walk 5K, it's on November 16th at AM, but you can sign up now. And then, also just to reiterate what everybody has said, Tim, the township owes you a debt of gratitude. I frequently have set up here on multiple occasions that the neighborhoods of Havre Township are often defined by our parks, you know, that's, that's how we, that's what you call the neighborhoods, is you define it by the park, and that's a testament to not only the town, but also to you and the work that's been done to create that community since. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I was stuck as my flights were canceled and missed Havre Township Day, but as I'm thinking about it, I realized that the first one I attended was 23 years ago, at the insistence of someone many people may remember named Marty Berger, who was politically active and dragged a lot of us out there, and we had quite a fun time with Marty leading the way and singing. When I recently stopped into Mr. Denny's office, he reminded me that we first met about 20 years ago, when I was addressing issues of gun control, and we've come a long way since then in some ways, and in some ways we haven't, but what has come a long way are the conditions of the parks, the playground, the recreation facilities in the township, and for that, and for the incredible way you have handled and worked with all of us, I thank you. It was highlighted without your name in a recent article in the Inquirer that focused on the positive of this township, on the growth, that we are becoming a destination, that we are a good place to be, and, and an excellent place to live, and it was nice to see that. But, as I always say, one of the reasons people move to communities is the parks and the recreation facilities, and ours are second to none. So, for all of that, and for your always kindness and sort of gentleness, I thank you, and I wish you the best in whatever you do. The last thing I want to touch on is voting, because it's important, but it's important in ways that sort of, if we haven't noticed, are different now in some ways from what they used to be. People who know me used to say that one of the reasons I love being a commissioner is that we never had to address national issues or sort of touchdown issues. Well, that's not the same any, this board has, over the years now, passed numerous resolutions relating to gun control. In the last couple months, we have had to deal with controversies relating to things like drag queens and dealing with the fire company. We live in a world where now, you know, when I observe religious holidays over the past couple weeks, we do it with enhanced security. There was a group who had their observance at the Havreford Friends Meeting, and they had police there, because we live in a different world. We are faced in the local areas with issues of national significance that impact us in different ways. Following the fire company issues, and to this day, I continue to receive email and comments on Facebook, including by some of the people who spoke at that meeting very loudly, that can only be deemed racist and offensive, and the reality is that this board and county council, your congressman, everyone from the president down, is responsible for trying to address the issues, and we all have different perspectives. So, please, when you go, and please go to the voting booth, whether you agree with me, disagree with me, or any of us, but understand, do the research on who is running and what they stand for on issues that matter to you, that matter to this country, and matter to this community. It is an important right, and democracy is what makes this country so wonderful, and voting is the ultimate act of democracy. Please, research the candidates, vote for the people who you believe will do the best job to represent your values and for the values of this community. There is no more important thing that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. Commissioner McGarrett.
Yes, number, a couple things here. Number one, Mr. and Mrs. Deal sent me a beautiful card, a retirement card. I want to thank them very much, they live in Achilles Road, and I personally went over and thanked them, but I want to also mention that again. Number two, I want to thank Tim Denny for recognizing Will Cleavins, who was on the park board, and he's sort of been on a walker for years, but the guys that could make the good times and had good legs, a lot of them didn't, but Will Cleavins made all the meetings and all the park tours, and Tim recognized that, and he told me that, he says, Will, Will, he gets around, so I want to thank you, because he's up in Brimwood Hospital right now. So, that's number two. Number three, I just want to respond to what the lady said here earlier about the libraries and all, and I, I just want to say that I've been around this town a lot longer than the person that was just speaking, I've been here 70 some years, and she's been here about four years, but we also have to realize, even though we're doing things and making things a lot better, the library at Darby and Mill Road is very, very successful, it's the most successful library in Havre in Delaware County. Also, what we also have to look at is, we've made a lot of things beautiful and nice here, but we also have to start looking at the tax structure, because just like these people, they're 95 years old, and they're afraid we're going to get driven out of Havre if we keep spending, 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 and we're doing that with the schools, and even though it's not our tax base, it's still tax money out of the people's pockets. We have to be careful of that, so, I don't know why you would want to take a successful story and change it, is what my point is being here, because of the library that's at Darby and Mill, it's very successful, the people tell you that it's the busiest library in Delaware County, so, has a great feeder system with the two, the middle school and the senior high school, and also, it basically has bus service better than what would be at Brookline School. So, I just wanted to comment on those things, that's how I feel about it, and I live right in that neighborhood where it's, where it's happening. So, please, try to watch the tax dollars of our senior citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Commissioner McGarrett.
Yes, I just reiterate, at the, we will be having a constituent meeting next Wednesday, October 23rd, and tomorrow, at seven o'clock in the Township Building, Commissioners McCluskey, Siegel and I, Township representatives from the Township and the police. All issues are welcome, certainly hope to and expect to hear input about the library and about the Brookline School site, but any other issues also. Secondly, Manoa Road Bridge, it will be finished, hopefully in the next three or four weeks. I guess the only guarantee it will be done before the Ardmore Avenue Bridge is done. And finally, Tim, I'll just also offer my, you know, best wishes, I appreciate everything you've done, second everything, and also, from a different perspective, of somebody you've played as a role model and a boss to my son, I also thank you for that. Very thankful, and hope to play some of that old man basketball with you.
You don't qualify, Derek. You're not 50 yet, you gotta be over 50.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate what Tim said and thank the committee for Havre Township Day. I was up in New York that day with a family thing, and it's first, I think, one of the few I've missed because of family commitments, but it's, it's a great job, and it truly does echo what Tim has done with all of you, guiding you, helping you, but we rely on the citizens, just like we rely on the Westgate Civic Club, the Hilltop Civic Club, civic associations, and Tim has been guidance there, and I'm gonna be happy, actually, I'm probably the happiest one here, I get, I get a great citizen back in the ninth ward that can volunteer in the Hilltop Civic Association, back in the July 4th thing, because he doesn't have conflicts, it's awesome, we'll get a live singer for the National Anthem with one of his kids again, I hope, but really, I started working with you on the ad hoc committee for the Havre Reserve, and your guidance there was tremendous, working with you and Jan Marie and many others on that committee for two years, to decide what we're going to do, and then to see it shepherd through, your guidance, your wisdom, and your patience was, was excellent. The mark of a good leader, I think, is you leave a good staff behind, you've, you've trained people, so, you're leaving, you're going to your next chapter, but we're not, we're not worse off for your leaving, unfortunately, you've trained people, which is the sign of a good leader, so, Godspeed to you, and thank you for all you do, and welcome back to the ninth ward as a, as a resident, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Vice President Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. Tonight at our meeting, we, we heralded a centenarian, we celebrated a new young leader in our town, we, we heralded a great veteran, we thanked a standing civic association, and thanked an ad hoc group of people who once again put together a great township day. We also celebrated the retirement of a, of a great, great public servant here. Then, we passed some laws, we spent five and a half million dollars, we debated something that might help light, we spent $32,000 on a brine machine that will make a difference the first time we have a snowfall. The point of bringing that up is, all of that happened here at the local level, and tonight, or other weeknights, all throughout the United States of America, a local group of people are making decisions like this. Think about that on November 5th. 99% of what matters in our lives is decided by people in a setting just like this, and it's done, and we make decisions, and boards make decisions about every aspect of your life. So while today at Congress, the Democratic Party got together in a caucus, and they spent hours and hours wasting time and debating whether to do anything tonight about an impeachment, all across America at the local level, this was happening, real leadership was happening. Do not forget that on the 5th, how important local elections are and local leaders are. Expect more from us, demand more from the people that are up here, and expect more from the people who want to hold this office. I can't stress enough, if you vote, if you only vote once every four years, you're better off voting in your, in your local election, because you will have more impact on your lives than you will in the presidential election, so please, I implore you, please take that seriously. Please do the little bit of research necessary to make an intelligent decision at the local and county level, because we are the people that affect your lives the most. On a different note, and a much more upbeat note, I consider myself usually a wordsmith, but to talk about Tim, I will rely on a professional, and I will, and I will quote Charles Dickens from Nichols, Nickelby. "Among men who have any sound and sterling qualities, there is nothing so contagious as pure openness of heart." And like Nickelby, I took that infection instantly, Tim, the day that I met you. It has been my privilege for 15 years to know that whatever else I screw up in this township, I knew somebody was in charge of parks and wrecks and was doing a good job there. So, thank you from the bottom of my and all of our hearts for the work that you did, for the sacrifice your family made to lend you to us for this long, and congratulations and best wishes on a well-deserved retirement. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. When I think of Tim Denny, I think class, class act, two words. So, you know, few people are, you know, irreplaceable, he might be one of them, he comes pretty close, so, we'll miss you, Tim, but you can always come back as emcee of the Havre Township Parade, so, we'll give that title to you for life if you'd like it, unless, I don't know, unless one of the commissioners wants it, but, thank you, Tim, for your great service. We went through a few battles in 2005, 2007, fortunately, we came out the other end on top, so, thank you for your leadership. Just want to make one announcement, we have a couple competing events relating to recycling and shredding, one put on by Delaware County District Attorney's Office, actually on the same date and the same time, as a Havre Township sponsored event. The District Attorney's Event is a identity theft prevention and drug collection event, protect your identity by shredding personal documents and securely disposing of hard drives, cell phones, tablets, thumb drives, laptops, and computers. It's being held on Saturday, October, October 26th, 9:00 AM until 12:00 PM, in the Manoa Shopping Center on 130 North Eagle Road in Havertown. Now to push our own event, we had already scheduled this, previously scheduled this to be just simply a shredding event, will be held on the same day, October 26th, from 9:00 to noon, at the Cooper Town Elementary School, and this will be a shredding event only, you can shred unwanted personal papers and documents safely and securely, you can watch it happen, it's absolutely free, Havre Township residents only, and for a four box maximum or equivalent, and we'll shred as much as we can until we, the trucks are full, so, that's all I have. Is there anything else, any other business to come before this board?
Motion to adjourn.
How we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.